Good evening, I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking a special blessing upon those gathered here to work together in the best interests of our children. We pray for our teachers and students that they may be able to focus on the challenges within the classroom and forge relationships that will promote positive environments for teaching and learning. Be with our administrators as they work to support the work of our teachers and give them the extra enthusiasm they need to pull their teams in productive directions. We are grateful, Lord, that you give us such talented and dedicated employees who are always willing to go the extra mile to help our students reach their greatest potential. These things we pray in your name. Amen.
Ms. Sassevater, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Sassevater?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. Gaines?
Here.
Mr. England?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyssard?
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine?
Here.
Dr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. First item on the agenda, our SuperNews, and with us tonight, we have Ms. Alex.
Good evening. We're going to keep tonight pretty short and sweet. There are a few events that I'd like to make you aware of. The first is Shamet High School's Fighting Owls take on Holy Cross this Friday at 7:00 at home. And immediately following the game is the annual Alumni Social that takes place in the cafeteria. We are also hosting, a lot of our schools this month are hosting both parent and grandparent engagement events. I know Airby Elementary recently had their grandparents' day, St. Bernard Middle School recently had Donuts and Dads, and so different events are happening at each of the schools. You can find out more information about that on each of our school websites. That will about do it, and we are going to kick off with SuperNews. Hi, I'm Alex Schneider.
And I'm Barry Lemoine, and welcome to this edition of SuperNews. We'll kick things off with a look back at our annual Day of Reflection Breakfast. Nearly 400 guests visited the Shamet High School gym for a morning of food, fellowship, and fun. Seniors Dylan Fusile and Kelsey Billiot served as the Masters of Ceremonies for this year's program with the theme of "Strong Schools, Strong Community." The breakfast celebrated the partnerships outside of the classrooms that make magic possible inside of them. Student performances took center stage as the Shamet High School Voices performed three powerful pieces while the Shamet High School Jazz Ensemble entertained guests as well. Kudos to the other student groups who made the event possible, the CHS Tech Crew, the ambassadors, the servers, the cheerleaders, and our culinary students.
But students were not the only ones who had an opportunity to shine during the breakfast. A true crowd pleaser each year, the men of Penn TV, Barry Lemoine, and Jack Jackson produced several memorable videos featuring parish leaders and members of the St. Bernard Parish School Board. The highlight of the morning and receiving the loudest applause was Sheriff James Pullman and Fire Chief Thomas Stone, who spoofed Wayne and Garth from the popular 1990's movie Wayne's World in a skit that celebrated the accomplishments of Shamet High School and Principal Wayne Warner.
And the class of 2017 also earned over $12 million in scholarships.
No way!
Way!
And over 50% of those students graduated with college credit.
50%, dude, that's almost half!
Hey, Tommy, remember what our homeroom teacher used to tell us when we asked for extra credit?
We're not worthy! We're not worthy!
In other news, school has officially begun for all of our pre-K through 12th grade students. Over 7,500 students are currently enrolled in our St. Bernard Parish Schools, and nearly 500 of those are in our preschool program. Ensuring that our students have a strong academic foundation at this early age creates a strong foundation for our students as they grow through our system. We are proud to welcome them to our school family and also proud to say that St. Bernard Parish Schools is one of the few districts in the state to offer a tuition-free, universal preschool program.
And speaking of universal things, the MoMA Center has announced its fall schedule. It looks like a fantastic season for audiences and stargazers of all ages as new shows have been added to our website. For a complete schedule, visit the website at the bottom of the screen.
You know, Alex, my favorite part of visiting the planetarium is seeing all the constellations, especially my favorite one, I can't remember the name of it.
Is it Sirius?
No, I'll remember it eventually.
No, I meant the constellation.
Oh!
In other news, fall sports are in full swing at CHS, and the Fighting Owls are looking strong after last week's big victory over Bogalusa. The next home game is this Friday as our Owls take on the Tigers from Holy Cross this Friday. We hope you can join us under the Friday Night Lights.
The Lady Owls volleyball season is also underway with seven matches already played. This year's squad is the largest one in years, and the commitment and dedication to the sport is evident. The team's next home game will be on September 21st against Chappelle as the Lady Owls gear up for the district play with an eye on defending their district title. You can find all the Shamet High School athletic schedules on the website below.
And while it may feel like the school year has just started, our first set of progress reports have already been distributed. Please review this report closely and reach out to your child's teacher with any questions or concerns. The end of the first nine weeks is October 10th, so your child has plenty of time to make sure their final report card is strong. And mark your calendars now as report card conferences are scheduled for October 24th. You will be receiving more information from your school in the coming weeks.
Well, that will do it for today's show. Thanks for tuning in, and we'll see you next time on SuperNews.
Where we always like...
The SuperNews Roll. We'll see you next time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schneider and Mr. Jack Jackson and Mr. Barry Lemoine. Great job as usual. And the social after the Shamet Holy Cross game is open to all alumni, and it's usually a very, very good reunion of Shamet High alum. So it's a great event. Thank you very much. Anyone want to add anything or ask any questions? Mr. England?
Yes, the only thing I want to say is to piggyback on what Diane was saying, but it's only $10, you know, to join an alumni. So in fact, if you go to the ballgame, the $10 will get you a free ticket into the ballgame.
And also, the Alumni Association really is trying to attract alumni of all of our parish high schools, St. Bernard High, Borogard, Shamet High, and Andrew Jackson. And there's also a designation of an ABC, which is an alumni by choice. So it's really open to everyone who would like to come and be a part of the Alumni Association and support the high school for St. Bernard Parish.
Thank you for that addition, Mr. England and Ms. Votche. Even Holy Cross, I think alumni belong to the Shamet High Alumni, ABC, Alumni by Choice. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you again. Okay, next item on the agenda is St. Bernard Reading Council presentation, and with us tonight, we have Ms. Shelley Lacoste and Ms. Kayla Russell. Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Kayla Russell, and I'm the kindergarten teacher leader at J.F. Goethe Elementary School. And I also serve as the membership chair for the St. Bernard Reading Council. Our mission for the 2017-2018 school year is to inspire our members to strive for excellence, both within the classroom and as individuals in the community. One of our goals is to retain members and increase attendance at both meetings and events. As of today, there are 87 members and growing daily. One aspect that the St. Bernard Reading Council is addressing this year is self-care, which supplements the district's initiative. The self-care initiative has been embraced throughout St. Bernard by both teachers and administrators in order to prevent burnout, stress, and fatigue. In order to fully care for our students, we must take care of ourselves. Our meetings will provide activities to address various components of the self-care plan, such as emotional, social, cognitive, and spiritual areas. By creating opportunities for educators to collaborate, relax, and enjoy each other's company, and donate to those less fortunate, we are building the capacity of compassionate and driven educators, which will positively impact our students. So on behalf of the St. Bernard Reading Council, I would like to thank Ms. Votche and the board members who joined last year. I am hoping that all of you will consider joining for the 2017-2018 school year as well. I would also like to thank Dr. Hugh Kraft and Ms. Votche for already joining this year. Lastly, thank you for everything that you do for our students, and together we can go beyond the expected. Now I'd like to hand it over to our president, Ms. Shelley Lacoste.
Hi, I came back today because last year we were so successful. We, thank you so much, all of you that joined last year, and everything that I said we were going to do last year, we really did accomplish all of that. And I brought our project board. We worked on this in the summer, and in July, we went to the state leadership conference. And it was my first time to do that because remember, last year when I came, I said it's my first time being president of anything, whatever. So now I actually know what I'm doing because I went to the leadership conference, so this year's going to be even better. But we were told to highlight our year. So Kayla and I and another member, we worked together and we put this together, and we have like little cards that, you know, was an explanation of what was going on for the event. So when we got to this conference in Marksville, they had a gallery walk, and so all the different councils from across Louisiana walked around, and they were supposed to, at the end, stand up and say something that stood out to them. And you wouldn't believe it, but every table stood up and said, "St. Bernard, St. Bernard, St. Bernard." It was so wonderful. And what they were most impressed with was our Young Authors Ceremony, the venue. You know, we have it at the Shamet High's Cultural Arts Center. Thank you that y'all let us use that. And it is an amazing venue for those children to be on such a beautiful stage and the parents to be in that auditorium, you know, watching their children receive that ribbon or the medal if they won the state. And they love that. And the other thing they were real impressed with was the big Easter tea that we do at Dockville Farms. And that event, they really liked it because we involve the members, we involve their children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews, and it's a huge event. And it was even bigger than ever before because this time, we even had the Easter Bunny come. Really, we did. And we, you know, the members sit down and eat scones and drink tea with china dishes. It's so lovely. And then the Shamet High Chalmers get involved, and they run the stations where the kids did arts and crafts and everything, and they hid the eggs. These little girls were amazing, the Chalmers. It was wonderful. So they liked everything that we did. They thought that we had so many more events than their councils do, so we're really so excited and we are so impressed to have, be able to say that Ms. Votche and our board members join our organization. And what I'd like to just go over is tomorrow is our first meeting, and we're having it at Arlene Miro Elementary School. I'm a first grade teacher there now. And Natalie Albers, the principal, is going to speak on how she handles raising four beautiful daughters and being the principal, which it's very hard, I'm sure, to juggle that, and I can't wait to hear what she has to say. We also are having it there because we're going to give free tours after the meeting. I'm going to take people around and let them see everything because so many teachers are interested in seeing what our new facility, you know, our new school is all about. And then in December, we're going to have a new function. It's going to be in the barn at Dockville, and it's going to be called the Country Christmas. And one of our members, Dr. Dawson, she already has arranged for several authors to come, local authors, and they're going to set up, you know, in different areas of the barn and read their books to the children. We're going to have the children come again, you know, our own children, grandchildren, whatever, and we're going to ask all of them to wear pajamas to the event, and we're going to have arts and crafts again, and you know, all kind of fun. So it's going to be a great thing. So if any of you want to bring your children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, you're more than welcome. And then in January, we have one of your board members, it's going to be our inspirational speaker. We're going to have something new called Chili and Chat. We're going to have delicious chili, and of course, and then a lot of the members at the bottom of their memberships, they said they wanted to know how to do intervention centers for older children. Like the younger teachers, we're so, not younger teachers, the teachers of the younger grades, you know, we're so familiar with centers and things like that, but the older grades, third through fifth, and then middle school, she's going to talk how you can do intervention centers at all levels, kindergarten through eighth. So we can't wait to hear what she has to say. And then again in March, we'll do our tea, and then we have the Young Authors Ceremony again in May, and then we have the big award ceremony in, in May at Crave. So it's a full year, and we're so excited. We are going to be doing the outreach program again because that was so successful. We're collecting spaghetti sauce tomorrow, and every meeting will collect something for the food pantry. And the people at the food pantry were so thankful, you know, they were so thrilled, and they would give us, you know, an idea of what they needed. And at Christmas, you know, we did icing and cake mix. That's what they said they needed so that the people in our community could have, you know, a nice cake, you know, they can make their own little cakes and cupcakes. So thank y'all for having us. We're so excited to start this new year, and thank you for everything that you do for all of us.
Well, Shelley, thank you so much, and you just were so excited about all of the programs that the St. Bernard Reading Council has and Louisiana Association. And congratulations on your first presidency. You did an excellent job, as we can see by all the events that were hosted, and congratulations also to you, Kayla, and good luck with your presidency this year.
Well, I'm still the president this year. Don't take it away yet.
Oh, okay.
Do another year, it's two years.
Oh, it's two years, okay. You next year. You're the president-elect, okay. Okay, good. Well, good luck on your, this coming year.
Thank you.
And all the events that you've had listed tonight. And again, we thank you for all that y'all do and for making reading and literacy such an important part of our school system. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Kraft?
Thank you, Ms. Dyssard. Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Ms. Lacoste? You know, it's, it's hard to beat enthusiasm. Enthusiasm begets enthusiasm, and the important thing is contagious. I could see a lot of you just sitting in your seats, you were catching, right? So we appreciate what you're doing. Now, reading is such an important skill, and it is so important to education. And within the elementary schools, the sooner we probably preschool to get people to love reading, the better off those youngsters are as they progress up through the spectrum. So we applaud you for what you do because that reading, they can find out about history, they can find out about English and all the other subjects that they're exposed to. And you know what? They can even be able to read the instructions for the video games, and that makes them really astute. So again, it's very, very important, reading. I know when I, when I taught math back, back last century, and I told them, you know, reading is important because, you know, even teachers have avoided reading problems over the, over the years. So you got to get used to those stated problems, those reading problems. So if you have difficulty reading, you have a little literacy deficit, then you won't do as well on the reading problems. And guess what? Most, most everything now and instructions on these tests that we're facing as we go forward, what are they? They're reading problems. So again, you got to decipher these. It's a language unto itself, but again, reading holds, holds that secret for looking at that reading and picking out what you got to do. If you don't do it, you don't get it right. So thank you for all you do, and please, please join the reading association. Don't let Ms. Votche and I be the only members here. And it's just a low sum of $20. Yeah, okay.
$20, I suppose.
$20, thank you very much.
Mr. Gaines?
Wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for coming tonight, and I'm looking forward to your coming to our Kiwanis Club meeting next week. We have a nighttime meeting, and they got to share with us what they do with the reading associations as well. The Kiwanis's mission, one of the missions is literacy, and we have a good bit of push from the international to do that. So we're looking forward to your presentation next week.
We'll be there, the two of us. Dr. Kraft?
This Thursday the 14th at high noon here in the cafeteria and at a conference room after we eat, we will have Ms. Albers speaking about that first new elementary school and giving us some background and telling us all about those wonderful teachers she has over there. That's going to make her look great and make us board members look great as we go forward. So any of you board members, any of you that can get off at 12:00 noon, come and be our rotary guest. We welcome you to be there, and Ms. Albers will do a great job in kicking this off. And then that's on the 14th, and on the 21st, we will have Mr. Scott Richard speaking to us about what's going on in school boards across the state. So again, Sean will invite you to be his guest there on the 21st. And on the 28th, we will have Mr. Rodney Watson from the Louisiana Retired Teachers coming in from Baton Rouge to speak to us. So that's the rotary act, and we, we believe in literacy and promote it worldwide as a rotary club. Thank you very much. Cut that in.
Two great other organizations too. Very good, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Ms. Lemoine?
Real quick, I just wanted to say, you know, the theme of our school year is beyond the expected, and I can't think of two people that don't embody that, that statement more. Thank you for everything that you do in the classroom, but all of the extra work that you put into planning these events and really, you know, thinking about the needs of the teachers, the members, and their families. So thank you so much. You represent St. Bernard so well, so thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Ms. Votche?
I don't know, it's when you laugh, you have nothing left to say. I just want to echo the sentiments of everyone around this horseshoe. It's a wonderful organization, it's tremendous teacher support, as evidenced by your growing membership, and I just want to thank you two for leading that effort this year and last year as well. And I know we can look for great things to happen and for our kids to be in classrooms with teachers as wonderful as the two of you are. I think they're very blessed, so thank you very much for everything that you do.
Thank you, so sweet.
Okay, anyone else? I think you just got a bunch more new memberships, Shelley.
We might get 100.
Maybe at 100% here.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and again, thank y'all for coming tonight. And Shelley was one of those exciting, very, very exuberant new teachers at Miro Elementary for the opening, along with all the other teachers there. So we thank you always for your enthusiasm and for all y'all's hard work. Thank you, Kayla, too.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is an education item. Dr. Lewis?
Thank you, Ms. Dyssard. Item six is an update on enrollment. Ms. Votche?
Y'all had asked for some head counts of where we are right now, and realizing that it changes daily as students add and transfer and families move in and families move out. So in front of you were counts from last year, the August 25th count compared with the head count that we just took on September the 8th of this school year. You can see it's an increase of a little over 200 students from last school year. Counting our pre-K program, we have 7,746 students and welcoming more every day. So good thing we have that new school to accommodate, to accommodate our growing population. Right?
All right. Any questions from any board members? Okay. Item seven is an executive item. Mr. Long?
Okay. Item seven is personnel changes, and I think we have Mr. Granberry. And he's on his way. This is for, good evening, Mr. Granberry.
That's where we stand pretty much right now.
Okay.
We still need one teacher at Andrew Jackson Mill, but hopefully the resignations have stopped, you know? But...
And what field do you need?
Special education.
Special ed?
Someone to do special ed. And we're looking right now, and we have someone filling in for the meantime, but we'll find someone.
Okay. Sounds good. Any questions for Mr. Granberry? No question, Ms. Dyssard?
Just a comment, Mr. Granberry, thank you for always, for your, your hard work and staying on top of everything, having us fully, all the teachers in place and all the personnel in place. So great job, thank you.
Pretty much being shared right now between a couple of people, so.
You what?
Ms. Votche's been doing it, Dr. Raviota's been doing it, we all kind of working together.
But we don't make a move without consulting Mr. Granberry.
Of course not. But thank you for all your hard work.
I appreciate it.
Sincerely appreciate you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dyssard. Mr. England?
Yeah, Mr. Granberry, I see right here that we had bus, bus drivers, a few bus drivers legal. Are we okay with bus drivers?
We okay. Ms. Ginnott's working on it, you know? She has a couple of substitutes that she's using, and she wants to make sure they know all the rules and regulations and they're well-trained prior to appointing them, you know? Yeah, but we fine with, and we can always use, always use bus drivers. We always need bus drivers, but we're not in a danger mode, you know? We have the people working that we need.
Okay, that's fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. England. Any other questions? Okay, see you in a minute. Thank you, Mr. Granberry. Item eight, Mr. Egan?
Item number eight is renewal of our general liability, auto, and legal liability insurance. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Okay, we have our friend, Mr. Trichie Clemens with us today, and we have a recommendation for renewal of general liability, auto, and legal liability for the board. We have found a renewal quote from Lama, which is the insurance pool that we've been participating in for quite a while now. And Mr. Clemens has also tested the market and tried to solicit quotes from some other conventional insurance agencies, but Lama seems to have a quote that is difficult to beat. If you look at the second, on the first page of the exhibit, past the title page and the second page, it's two pages. The second page shows you the premium. We're going to have a decrease in premium from last year. It's going down from $228,000 to $203,000. So it's a pretty nice decrease. Also, we're going to be eligible for a Lama grant of $30,667. Those grants, as you recall, we gain equity in Lama Fund, and they do kind of return every year in the form of a grant. So that would be what we would be eligible for this year if we were to renew at Lama. So this is going to be our recommendation that we renew at Lama. We've had good experience with them. We have a lot of benefits to stay with them, and we think it's in our best interest to stay with the Lama organization. So if you have any questions?
Any questions?
Like a comment?
No second?
All right, we have first and a second. Please vote your machines.
I'd like to comment before I...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we got this shortly after, after Katrina, right?
Yes, sir. Actually, I think we might have started a little before Katrina.
Well, that'd be...
We've been with them for a while, yes, sir. We've been with them for a while, yes, sir.
With the equity refund there, we've, we've probably saved over a million dollars.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we've been getting those grants, you see, over the last three years.
We looked at a lot of insurance companies that were not within this consortium and the insurance premiums were prohibited, so.
Yes, sir.
We've done good maintaining this over the years and it's a good fit.
Yes, sir, certainly is.
You got a good fit, you want to continue, okay? Now you can vote there.
Thank you.
Well, just next time, grab your...
Well, I was, wouldn't you, but you didn't.
Would you please vote your machines?
Dr. Kraft?
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mrs. Lemoine.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine is the request for permission to advertise for bids for spices and seasonings, class two. Cereal, dried beans and crackers, class three. Frozen foods, class five. Meat and meat products, class six. Poultry and eggs, class seven. Seafood products, class eight. And canned goods, class nine. And we have Ms. Bloom with us, thank you.
Good evening. We're requesting permission to advertise for our six-month bid for the spring semester.
I'm moving, please accept Mr. Bloom's bid.
Okay, we've got a motion by Dr. Kraft, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any questions? Not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
Agenda item number 10 is superintendent's recommendations. Ms. Votche?
Just a couple of comments. We've had a, you know, great opening, everything is running very, very smoothly. Our people seem to be extremely excited and still, even though we've been in school now over a month, oh my goodness, five weeks or so, boy, does time fly, huh? And things are still going well after the first five weeks. We've gotten a lot of positive community feedback on our breakfast. They say that our, each year it's the best ever. And I just want to really thank the students at Chalmette High School for the wonderful performances, the Chalmette High Voices, the Jazz Band and all the ancillary groups that helped tremendously, the ambassadors and the servers and the cheerleaders and all the groups that helped make it such a success. So I hope, I think this will be a harbinger of a very, very good year. And that's what we're looking forward to for this year.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Votche. Anyone else? Mr. Long?
One brief question. Ms. Votche, I know we talked about the enrollment numbers. What's the date when we have to report to the state our, our numbers?
October 1st.
Okay, and that's what determines the...
The MFP, yeah. The first part of the year, yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes, and talking about the reflection breakfast, we're so fortunate that we get a good cross-section of our community and they have supported this function well over the years and we, hopefully they are continued into the future.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft. Anyone else? Okay, there being no further, there's a motion to adjourn, but Mr. Campbell, is there a second? Second by Ms. Assavete, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.